How are you?
Good evening, everyone. It's August 5th, 2025. Six o'clock, time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We begin each of our meetings with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, Councilman Carter is going to offer our prayer and lead us in the pledge. And I'd invite you to stand with me, please.
May we bow? Dear Lord, we come to you asking you for forgiveness. Lord, we ask that you would just bless our hearts and our minds, Lord, to make the decisions for the betterment of the city of Gallatin. We ask that you help us to be on one accord, Lord, and we ask that you just bless us as we come and go and do your business. In your name we pray and ask it all, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ketchel, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Hayes. Councilman Alexander is absent. Councilman Carter.
Present.
Councilman Fann. Councilman Fennell is absent. Councilman Jones.
Here.
And Councilman Juvance. Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. This evening, you have the minutes from the July 15th, 2025 City Council meeting to consider their approval. Motion to approve by Councilman Jones. Second by Councilman Juvance. Are there any corrections or additions requested? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from July 15, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. They are unanimously approved. We'll now move to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can speak to any item that is on this evening's agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to an item that's not on the agenda. Each of those public speaking times, you have five minutes. We need your name and your address for the record. And I think with that, public recognition on agenda-related items is open.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Chad Hall, 104, Bens Court in North in Gallatin. And I'm here today to speak in support of Agenda Item Number Four for the appropriation of the special events for tourism. So I just wanted to, first of all, introduce myself. For those that don't know, I'm the president of Bold Aviation. We are the nonprofit that organizes the Music City Stole Event. This is our third year, and we're also, I'm really here to talk about the Rockin' Stole Event, which is really the thing that I've been working with Jenna Tourism on. So first of all, I just wanted to say first, I watched the meeting last time. I want to thank Councilman Juvance and Fennell for seconding the funding of the project. We initially wanted to make sure we could pay our dues and wanted to fund this project in a way that was responsible. And initially, you know, we had asked for the 15,000, but it's going to take 30,000 for us to actually do this event properly. And I do want to speak to that just in a moment, but I do want to get some clarification, first of all, just to make sure that everyone understands. And I think most of you all may be familiar with the Music City Stole Event that we've been doing the last three years. This Rockin' Stole Event is actually a separate and standalone event. We've tried to incorporate music into our Stole Event, the short takeoff and landing event, for the last three years because we want to do something that makes this event really attractive to not only people in our own community, but people outside of our community as well. We're also wanting to make Gallatin the place where the National Stole Series does its big finals for the year. So we want to make this a target community to be able to take their flagship into the year finals and make Gallatin the home for that. So trying to figure out how to make music work better, the first two years wasn't great, but the, speaking to a friend of mine, Kevin McCutcheon, we came up with the idea that a Friday night concert to utilize the infrastructure that we already have in place, utilize a lot of the security and everything that we have in place. And with his connections in the music business and the infrastructure that is already supporting the Music City Stole Event, we were able to do this event at very, very low cost. And so anyway, we think that it's going to bring a lot of people in. It's going to bring in a lot of people from our community and give something fun to do. And this is something that no one else is doing anywhere in Middle Tennessee, and it's a great opportunity to have essentially a really unique event. And I have been talking to Jenna Lansford, and first of all, I have to just brag on her. She's fantastic. We've had several conversations, and she has some amazing ideas on how to promote this event. Anyway, I just want to say she's a great asset to Gallatin, and I've enjoyed working with her, speaking on this project. But again, we want to make this event free to the public. I don't really want to commercialize it. It's not in our budget for the Music City Stole Event. The Music City Stole itself can exist without this music. But I think this music is what's going to make this event bring so much more attention and bring people into our community and introduce them to this event that normally would probably not come. So we have, you know, high-profile artists and a couple of other local artists that will be headlining this event. So I think it's going to be a great way for tourism to be able to show our community, show Gallatin, and show an event that I think would be fantastic here for the rest of the year. Obviously, it's the first event. We want to prove it and show that we can do it well. And more than anything, regardless of the funds that are allocated for this event, we want to make sure that you guys understand that as someone that's born and raised here, I take any request for money very, very seriously. And we want to make sure that whatever we do, the city gets a return, a significant return on their investment. And it's everything in our power to be able to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that the Rockin' Stole Event is separate from the Music City Stole Event, and really appreciate your support on this ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Hall? I said, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, now would be your time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Edwin Memes, 905 Ramsey Drive in Gallatin. Mayor, council members, I come before you tonight asking you to vote no on Project Phoenix, which engages the city into a public-private partnership that was discussed at the most recent meeting. As was discussed at that time, it would require the city to turn ownership of Gallatin City Hall and the affected properties to the Gallatin Industrial Board for the purpose of development. I personally feel Gallatin City Hall should not be put up for sale nor be given away to any developer. Having a city hall is not a function of industrial development and should not be treated as such. If the current facilities are so bad at City Hall, as alluded to in this last meeting, I would ask that the money the city of Gallatin is currently considering obligated in this contract be reallocated immediately to go for the necessary mechanical functions to make this facility fully functional. What appeared to be stated was if the plan is not feasible, the city would be obligated to pay up to $50,000. I would also ask the city officials to make public the current ongoing space utilization plan on file currently with the city, as well as any current contingency plans and disaster recovery plans, and the city hall has to be temporarily closed. These are basic plans that every city and county government and municipality in this state has readily available. It also should be very helpful for the general public and taxpayers to see the punch list of repairs that are needed for City Hall and what items were requested during the recent budget hearing process. With this information, clear, concise decisions can be made as to the next step the city of Gallatin needs to take before moving forward. As leaders of this city, you have a responsibility to engage with the issues brought forth by the taxpayers and public within government. I ask that you take a position and present your reasoning in a thoughtful dialogue. Silence is a neutrality as is perceived as indifference, and indifference erodes the public trust. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, public here, public recognition on agenda-related items is closed. And I'm going to move on to several mayor's announcements this evening. Just a few events coming up, a couple very important ones. The first one is that I would invite you this week on the 7th, 10:00 a.m., to join us finally for the dedication of the Danny Randolph Memorial Mile. This council may recall that last year, we sent it to the General Assembly because it is going on a state road to rename part of Albert Gallatin, or not rename, but honorarily named part of Albert Gallatin, the Danny Randolph Memorial Mile. He was the young man from Gallatin who was killed in a helicopter crash in Alabama, a Black Hawk pilot. His mother was a longtime employee of the city of Gallatin, and she had wanted to do something in his memory, and the similar thing was done for the other pilot in Alabama. So it's taken us a very long time to get it done. It was approved by the legislature this year and then getting through T.DOT. They are supposed to have installed the signs today, or they will do it tomorrow. I still don't know the specific location where we're going to do it. I'm going to wait and see where they put the actual signs in, but it will be somewhere on Albert Gallatin, and we will follow up with those details to the council by email, and we will certainly put on social media as well. I also want to invite you this Friday to join the Finance Department from 2:00 to 4:00 in the dining room for a very special recognition, and that's the 50th anniversary party for Vicki Willoughby. They're celebrating an impressive employment milestone, certainly, and setting the stage to celebrate her 55th and 60th anniversaries with the city as well. So I'd invite you to join us for that. Other events coming up, the Boo-Hoo Back-to-School Bash happening at the station from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. on the 8th. The night, there is a Summer Sizzler 5K, 10K, 15K at Triple Creek Park Softball Complex C, starting at 7:00 a.m. The, he didn't mention this when he spoke earlier, but the Appetites Airplanes and Automobiles Monthly Breakfast at the Music City Executive Airport that Mr. Hall is also in charge of happens from 8:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. Wouldn't that be something, 10:00 p.m.? And it's always a great event, and as I say each month, if you've not been to it, you're really missing out, and it's a great thing to take kids to. There is an American Red Cross Blood Drive at the Civic Center on the 11th, from 11:00 to 4:00. They are having, this is a cool thing, the Chamber has helped doing, it's the Gallatin Pep Rally on the Square. It's from 6:00 until 8:00 p.m. It's next Tuesday night. We will miss it, but if there are people not coming to the council meeting, I think you'll really enjoy the back-to-school pep rally on the square from 6:00 to 8:00. On the 14th, the United Way of Sumner County is having their Community Impact Breakfast at Our Lady of the Lake Catholic Church from 7:30 until 10:00. And then I hope you will help spread the word about the Free Dental Day at Northfield Church happening on the 16th of August, and that happens from 7:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. And I've had the opportunity to attend this in the past, and they are doing some incredible work for some people who really need and appreciate the help. So if you know anyone that might be looking for some dental care, this is a good opportunity to get even some really major stuff done. And so I would suggest they at least check it out if they'd like to see what they're offering on that day. That is going to conclude my mayor's comments, and I will move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the agenda is the public, I'll let Councilman Fann introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing, Wheeler Annexation, Six Month Plan of Service Update. This is the public hearing.
This is a public hearing on the Wheeler Annexation, Six Month Plan of Service Update. If anyone would like to speak to it, your time would be now, and we welcome you to the podium. Seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, the public hearing on the Wheeler Annexation, Six Month Plan of Service is closed. We will move now to Item Two, which is First Reading on Ordinance 02507-43. Councilman Jones is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance appropriating $54,862.92 from revenue received from insurance for damaged vehicles. Motion to move?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jones, second by Councilman Juvance. Opening the floor for any questions or discussion. Seeing none, this is First Reading on Ordinance 02507-43. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item Three is First Reading on Ordinance 02507-44. Councilman Fann.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance awarding a bid and authorizing funds in a total amount of $1,020,000 from water sewer reserves for the WWTP Clarifier Lander Covers Project. Now so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fann, second by Councilman Juvance. Any questions, any discussion? This is First Reading on Ordinance 02507-44. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously approved. Item Four is First Reading on Ordinance 02507-45. Vice Mayor Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance appropriating $30,000 from the occupancy tax reserve to tourism special events. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Juvance. I would request that, well, two things. One, I am concerned about doing the full $30,000. That's why in our discussions, we did suggest a lower amount, but it is the will of this body. But secondly, if there's no objection, I'd like to ask Richard DePriest to come to the stand because I think with this, we could also, well, you may want me to do it separately, but provide garbage support for the event, for both the stole and the stolen, Rockin' Stole.
Yeah, for the last few years, we've provided trash support as far as personnel, tip and fees, everything's covered. We take care of it Friday and Saturday, and it's been requested again. So I just need this body's permission, and something we can handle, I just want to make sure it's okay with y'all.
Motion to approve?
Okay, we can, we can do that separately because it doesn't need two readings, or we would normally do it under other business at the end of the meeting, so I think that's proper motion and second. So I'd ask all in favor of approving trash support for the Stole Event and the Rockin' Stole, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, it is unanimously approved, and we're back to the original motion, which is the $30,000 from occupancy tax reserve to tourism special events. Any questions, any discussion? Okay, this is First Reading on Ordinance 02507-45. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes First Reading unanimously. Item Five is Resolution R2507-37. Vice Mayor Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee to reimburse itself for expenditures relating to public works projects with the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds or notes to be issued in the appropriate amount of $1,350,000. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, second by Councilman Carter. Are there any questions or discussion? Ms. Nichols has something to add.
I apologize. The title did not get changed to reflect the updated number that is in the resolution. When it came to you at the work session, we added a couple more items to this, and that brings the total to $3,275,000, and I just wanted to make that clear to everyone.
Do we need to make an amendment? Okay, I'll make an amendment to what's that amount?
3.275.
3.275.
Okay.
Second.
Amendment offered by Vice Mayor Hayes, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Amendment is approved, and we're back to the motion now as amended. Any questions or discussion on it? Okay, this is Resolution R2507-37 as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item Five is Resolution R2507-39. Councilman Juvance.
Yes, ma'am. It's a resolution approving an indemnity and all downless agreement with a certificate of liability insurance to use the city-maintained right of way once constructed and accepted by the city of Kennesaw Boulevard and Oakfield Boulevard in the paddock of Kennesaw Farms face two subdivision for the installation and the maintenance of the street trees. And that's a move.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Juvance, second by Councilman Fann. Any comments, questions, suggestions? It's a very good thing. All right, it's Resolution R2507-39. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously approved. Item Seven is amended Resolution R2507-41. Vice Mayor Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution by the Gallatin City Council for preliminary concept plans for Project Phoenix to be developed based on new city hall. Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, a second by Councilman Carter. Ms. Bates, I don't know if you wanted to have Mr. Trent add anything additional this evening, but before you answer me on that question, I do want to share with the council that I did get an email from Councilman Alexander earlier today, and he said that he's not at the meeting tonight, obviously. And he says he truly hates to miss, especially with the Phoenix vote on the agenda. He said he would like to see each of those future votes be full-member roll-call votes. So I wanted to pass that on out of respect for his request.
Mr. Trent did not develop this particular resolution. He worked on the MOU that is also on the agenda. Susan and I worked on this resolution. If you have questions about this one.
I can answer those. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Opening the floor for questions and discussion. Councilman Juvance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to move that to the next council because I think everybody should be here for that discussion. It's too big of, it's too big of a project to basically have two members absent. There should be a full council to vote on that. So I make a motion to move Item Seven and Eleven to the next council.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Juvance to move both of these items to the next council meeting. I have something to say about that. See if there's a second. Okay, so that motion will die as, for lack of a second. The thing that I wanted to share is that I do have concerns about having a full council over the next several weeks because I'm aware of various schedules associated with different council members. And so I think we may find ourselves hard-pressed, as we do certain times throughout the year, to have all members present. So at this point, it is not deferred to a later date, which takes us back to amended Resolution R2507-41. And remember that this is the one that basically says that we are asking Boyle to develop based on a new city hall. It doesn't commit the city to do anything. It just is directing them on the plans as we've been, you know, discussing for quite some time, whether we want to have them develop that way or with the existing city hall. I have a motion and a second for amended Resolution R2507-41. Would all in favor, please say aye.
Open for the. All right, the gentleman, the first question I have, and that's probably for Susan because gentleman mentioned the public-private partnership. But if I remember, that's how that was presented to us to start, that's how that was quoted in a paper.
This is not a public-private partnership under the law. This is not.
So where, where I have an issue with that is that I go back, I go back to the start of how that happened. If I remember, the gentleman for Boyle said that after the little trip was organized for the council, the next day, James spent on calling to look at that. Where I have an issue is that if this, this is the intent of the city to redevelop that portion of the city, why we're talking only to one development company? And everything we do in the city, we put it to bid, we open it, and that's not the case here. So I have an issue with that.
Can we speak to that, just because I feel like I'm going to lose track of your questions? We spoke about that a lot in the beginning, and because, I mean, I had the very same concerns. And we discussed that, we talked about how to properly navigate that because it was their approach of us and that they were going to invest many, many dollars in actually seeing the feasibility of it, and it would not make sense, basically, for someone to design a project in cooperation with the city. And then basically, we just throw it out there for somebody to underbid on construction that would not be committed to the same project. I don't know, Ms. Bates, if you would want to add to anything that I just said. It was a long time ago then we discussed it, but that was, I mean, one of the things in the very beginning that felt very like, how do we properly navigate this, and is it legal and all the things?
I think that this is a question that actually falls under the MOU, not this particular resolution. But to answer that question, I would defer to Mr. Trent because he has the attorney who has guided us through how we can legally do all this from nearly the beginning. So that one, if he does not mind, I would.
I would ask the council to.
Or suspend the rules, perhaps, maybe?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Councilman Juvance, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Trent, I would welcome you to the podium to help us continue to navigate.
Good evening, I'm Tom Trent. Nice to see you again. The business issue at hand was whether or not a developer would be willing to invest the time, energy, and money to come up with a plan that you could then decide whether you wanted to proceed with. If they did all that, and then at that point, it was put out in a position where multiple people could come in and underbid them. And so the decision was made last fall, spring? I don't remember, 2024?
Long time ago.
Twenty what?
March of '24.
'24, yeah, so over a year ago. To proceed on the basis where we would use the Industrial Development Board as a vehicle because the Industrial Development Corporation Act says the city can grant its property, including money or real estate, to the IDB, and the IDB then can negotiate with private parties and doesn't have to publicly bid it. So the MOU is with both the city, Boyle, and the IDB in order to enable us to proceed on that basis. That decision was made March a year ago. So that's why it's structured that way, and you go through the IDB for that. But the new MOU, which we can talk about in a little while, is structured now so that the decision-making as to whether to proceed is entirely vested in this city council. And that's, in response partly to conversations over the last year and a half, and that's certainly appropriate. So the IDB will eventually, if and when this decision's made to proceed, and you don't have, you don't have all the plans and things yet to make that decision. The IDB, the decision will be done under a separate project agreement, which will have all the details, and the city will have to prove that before the IDB can sign it under this new draft. Thank you.
And I think the attraction is the, the type of investment that they were talking about bringing in their own experience in developing similar projects, but also with the knowledge that the city had an exit. If at any point, we did not feel like the plans were exactly right for our city, or it wasn't going to meet our needs economically or, or any of the things. And so that's why we continued on that vein back then.
And to your credit, you limited your exposure during this time period to $50,000. And other than that, there is no obligation. And that's to help pay for a portion of the cost of all the pre-development, which they estimate to be well over $177,000. So they're well into spending a lot more than you will be.
Yes, I guess if we were, I'm thinking out loud, I always say that's dangerous, which I guess if we were putting the property on the market, which I would never do because we wouldn't have control of the finished product, we would have to know a lot of the things that they are learning on their own. That would be investment that we would be making. That would be investment that we would be making. Okay, questions for Mr. Trent?
Great question, thank you.
I would have more when we come back to the MOU later, but this one is just about, so now, same thing, we, we talk about an underground parking lot, who's gonna change, who's gonna change the cost of the building? And there is something on the MOU about the parking will bother me, but it's there. I don't think, but I've been there only for nine or 10 years, but I don't think any underground project has been done in the city yet. Maybe if-
Our house, the bank next door, both of those have underground parking.
Okay. But that, that changed the, the dynamic of what was before, because what I don't see that if we remove from what was initially proposed, the parking lot where that was, that opened, that opened the spot for more apartments, and that's what I would like to know, even if we honor-
I, I, I think in the MOU, when we get to that part of it, it has that spelled out, and it does have the change with the number of hotel rooms. And remember, as we talked about it, like, part of the concept with, that we showed was if we're, the thing that appealed to me the most about being able, the only reason I even opened my mind to consider rebuilding City Hall was to be able to keep the project more contextually sensitive to the square, and they felt like it would be able to make less of an above-ground parking garage if we were able to go underground. And so that was very, very important to me. But this, in doing it with this way, with a different footprint for City Hall, it also allows that setback that creates that green space close to Main Street, which I think makes it really complementary to the square. And that was not part of the original concept, when this building remained just as it is. And, and I think, I mean, a lot of things, I think, could change before we see the end of the road plans, but I'm just telling you the things that I found valuable and, and kind of changed my mind about being willing to consider a new City Hall.
Now, I saw the drawing for the last one was presented, where I think was looking a lot better than what's presented now. I think that was probably a great idea, and that didn't go through. And another issue I have is when we talk about independence, and the, basically, by doing that, we totally remove the idea of even studying how to take care of that building if Phoenix doesn't go through, where we went with Studio Eight, where I don't understand why, again, on a business perspective, when we had a company who got used five years ago, who did a study, who did actually, because I founded, who actually did plans to use that building, who's to renovate and move things around, was actually good plans. Why do we go to a different company when we already had someone who knew the layout of the land, and who could have maybe done, you know, a different vision that what that is? And again, on the process of choosing the provider, I have an issue, because, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there was a, an open bidding process to find a design company.
Yeah, you don't, you don't bid out professional services. I recall, and, and Ms. Bates, again, I invite you to weigh in if you recall something different, but, but first of all, that original plan that was done, they completed it right before COVID. And so it was kind of a concept that was taking off at that period in time, it got squashed as soon as COVID hit. And basically created some space that we did not feel that would work for the next version of City Hall. At first, we were excited about it, but then we weren't so excited about it. And so then, when we went down this road, and we felt like we knew we had to come up with a different kind of plan for our City Hall, plus things had changed a lot in that period of time, as far as what we were thinking was gonna happen with various city departments, I think we asked Boyle if there were any companies they recommended. And then I specifically remember, or maybe we didn't, I don't know, but I specifically remember that Studio Eight was the one that had done the project for Franklin. And I reached out to the Franklin mayor, and I asked them what their experience had been, and it was very positive. And, and then he gave me someone else to ask about them, and I did that. And we wanted somebody that had an experience working with a city hall, and they had that uniquely, and, in this area. And so we felt like they, I mean, you may want to add to it?
Yes, ma'am. We actually issued a request for qualifications to do a city hall space assessment.
Okay.
As I recall, we interviewed four firms, including Gresham Smith, who had done the study in 2020. The group that did the interviewing today, I mean, in, in last year, four years after the Gresham Smith report was done, the group that came to the table representing each of these companies, the, the other companies did not see, receive the same rating as Studio Eight. Their presentation was far more encompassing and more in line with what we were trying to find out. They were doing much more listening to each of the departments and their needs, and their report was more in line with the expectations of a true city hall space needs assessment. Gresham Smith, as you said, ended up actually working during COVID, and they would come in the building, for many months there, there were maybe two or three of us working inside the building during COVID, and I was one of those people, so we were able to let them in. But there were at least four companies interviewed. There was, you know, like, a few weeks there where we were shut down, and, to the outside public. But there were four companies, they were all interviewed by a committee, as we do most of our professional services-type RFQs, and this company ranked the highest. Yes, we did reach out to other entities to find out what their experience-
We weren't familiar with them, I remember that.
Right. You had, you had a conversation with the mayor of Franklin. Yes, we asked Boyle if they had any experience with Studio Eight. And I honestly can't remember what they said, that was a year ago. But we actually did a formal RFQ process, interviewed four companies, followed our process for acquiring professional services, and you're correct, we can't bid that out, it can't be a cost factor. But they were the ones that were selected, and if you remember, the Industrial Development Board paid for this study, it was up to them to decide who to hire, not, they were paying for it. I was on that panel, there were other people on that panel, including members of the Industrial Development Board.
Thank you for that explanation, your memory is far better than mine.
Yeah, I, I think it's pushing the ball too fast with the change of, and again, it says, you know, conversation on the 28th, there was no, there was no conversation, there was a nice presentation by you, Mayor, and there was two and a half minutes of comments from the, from the board, so I don't call that a conversation. I think there is probably other options. We're going blind, we're voting on things with a lot of answers we don't have, and I think we should have more, more answers and questions at that point, that's been going for more than a year. And when I hear that they're gonna spend $177,000, and the worst-case scenario, they get 50 out of it, that show me they expect to get a contract, and I don't think if, if that, the goal to redevelop that block of the city, I think that should be open to more than one company, and that should not be us going around the law by using the IDB to ban, basically ban the system.
Stop that.
That's, that's basically what, what I heard, we go to the IDB, so we don't have to do a bidding process. So-
We're going through the IDB, because that's a legal process. We're not trying to bend the system.
Because there was, there will be no bid, Boyle will get the contract with nobody else involved. That's basically why, why it's done. And I think, again, if that's what we want to do, we should not just look at one, and-
And, and, and again, I'll explain that the reason that we're, in my mind, the reason that we are in this scenario, is if we had a vision to redevelop the City Hall block, and had done all of the, you know, done all the, spent all the money to know the geotechnical and all the things about this property, and we could do, and say an RFP process, I don't think you would have a lot of people interested unless we were just giving it away for some reason, because they would have no idea what they were getting into. They'd be buying unproven land with a lot of costs associated with it. But this was a company that comes in and, and is, you know, offering us a solution that is character consistent with our existing downtown square, and has the reputation of being a premier developer in this type of development in this area. And I, 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 I think that this is not something that is, something that would be widely attractive to lots of different companies. And then I wanted to address what you said about we need a lot more answers, and I've said it, and said it, and said it, and said it. I think the basis for us having some answers has to be some plans, because until we have some plans, we don't have any numbers. And we have to have plans so that we have numbers, so we understand what the cost to the city could be, and they truly have to understand what their cost is gonna be, because our market is not like downtown Nashville's market, or downtown Franklin's market, or bear, you know, any of the other markets that they've worked in. And so it has to work for them, just as it has to work for us. And I don't think they're confident that it will work for them, and there's no way we can know if it will work for us. But the reason that I say it's worth exploring, and I've said this so many times, is because this is an opportunity for new revenue to pay the cost of improvements that we know that we need in the city. Whether, you know, we know we're getting ready to build new fire hall, we know in the years ahead, we're gonna have to rebuild a police station, and this city hall will have to be either completely renovated or rebuilt. Again, if this project doesn't happen, I would, I can't see a scenario in which I'd say, let's rebuild it. I just wouldn't. I, I can't find another way to make that make sense in my head. But if this is an opportunity that creates a really great asset to the existing square, and revenue to support the investments that the city needs to make, rather than coming from the taxpayer, it's existing tax base, I think it's worth exploring. And that, and to me, that's all this is, is something that we are exploring. It is not a decision that is made, there's, we don't have information to make a decision yet, I agree with that. But the decision that this vote is on is whether the plan should include a new city hall or the existing city hall. Very simple. And, and I can't compel people to comment. I also wish there were more discussion, but-
I'd like to make a motion to call for the question.
What, what?
A motion to call for the question.
Okay, motion to call for the question. Second?
Second.
Okay, second by Vice Mayor Hayes. All in favor of calling for the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
A call for the question passes one, two, three, four to one, unless one of you all voted no, and I didn't understand. Okay, so we will vote on amended Resolution R2507-41. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Passes four to one. We will move to item number eight. Wait, okay, yes, item number eight, which is Resolution R2507-42, and Councilman Carter, you're recognized for that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution confirming reappointment of Kenneth Thompson Jr. to the Galton Historic District Commission. I so move.
By Councilman Carter.
Second.
Second, by Councilman Jones. Any questions, any discussion? He is a blessing to that commission.
Oh, he is. He is a great wealth of knowledge. I love to be in his presence anytime I can.
For those who may not know, he's a true Sumner County historian, specifically focused on our city. So this is Resolution R2507-42. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item nine is Resolution R2507-43, Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to authorize the city of Galton to apply for State of Tennessee Tourism Marketing Grant. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Carter, second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hayes. Any questions, any discussion? Okay, it's Resolution R2507-43. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is Resolution R2507-44, Councilman Van.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution confirming reappointment of Rick Murphy to Resource Authority Board in Sumner County, Tennessee, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Van, second by Councilman Carter. Any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R2507-44. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 11 is Resolution R2508-47, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign amended and restated memorandum of understanding for Project Phoenix. Motion to move?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jones, second by Councilman Carter, opening the floor for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. The stuff I would have loved to have is a redline copy, because I've read that stuff so many times that I can't even find, find changes, but we talk about the parking in there, and I have an issue with that. Let me find it there. So, on the MOU, it said the parking garage is gonna be located on Block A, so basically now, under the City Hall. And it doesn't specify if it's under the City Hall or not. And something doesn't specify too, and I think was part of the previous MOU is that who was gonna pay for the parking garage. I think that disappeared, if I remember well. So if the parking garage is under the City Hall, like we're talking about now, we need to make available parking there for the hotel and the residences. So, again, it's so vague, we don't know, you know, how much parking, we don't know, and, and again, who's gonna pay for it. I don't know why that disappeared from the MOU. That was part, that was actually one part was supposed to be decided before we moved to the design phase. So why, why is that not there anymore? And the more I think about it, and some people talk to me about it, so, is the exclusivity clause in there, because this contract is made between Boyle and basically the city, but we put an exclusivity clause. I don't think, I don't think we can do that. I don't think we can- I don't think we can give exclusivity or the contract need to be changed. That's another stuff I would like to hear from Mr. Trent about that. Suspend the rule?
Suspend the rules and invite Mr. Trent back to the podium. Second by Councilman Carter. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Mr. Trent?
Yes, so what is the question?
I'm not sure.
About the exclusivity.
That's already in the contract.
He's questioning whether there can be an exclusivity clause if the city is involved in the contract. I believe is the question.
Of course it can. And we talked, that was the same conversation we had about the resolution a few minutes ago. By, by doing this grant through the grant of the land that ends up in the project, if you approve it, nothing's approved at this point. It's to enable you to get enough information to decide whether to approve it. But if at that point you approve it, it will be conveyed to the Industrial Development Board, and then it will be developed by Boyle. It's, the reason why the parking is structured the way it is here is it's an option. It says or. It'll either be surface structural or below grade. We're just clarifying that, because they don't know yet. And every building I've ever worked in downtown has both. So this, this is, none of this is surprising. So yes, it can be exclusive.
I would add just to that comment. I mean, this is just kind of a, for, I guess, framework. In all the years that I've been having conversations about investment in downtown and redevelopment of the periphery, lots of people interested, but nobody that's actually said, we seriously want to consider something. I am aware that there is a group currently interested in a different area, and I do hope that they will make some investment. But until they do, you know, we just don't. And I think that this could really spur some valuable investment that would bring more residences to the periphery of the square. This project has also been widely exposed. I mean, it's been in the media a lot, and no one has mentioned to me. I was at a, I was with a whole lot of people that would have mentioned to me that, hey, if this doesn't work, we're interested. And I have not heard from anyone that is. And so I think it's, I think that because they have invested so much in researching the city and believe so strongly in the downtown square, that they are somewhat uniquely positioned to make this kind of investment and make it work for themselves, this investment. I don't want to sound all pro, you know, company, but I just know from my own experience in many, many, many discussions where, you know, so many people have said, one day, one day. And, and so this is an opportunity. And, and, and then it is very compelling. I mean, I, I've said it before, but when I got the call saying, would you consider redevelopment on the City Hall block? And I said, ugh. Well, I never say never, because you don't know what the opportunity might be. And the truth is, if the opportunity, in my mind, that is the, that is the second biggest part as next to bringing more residences to downtown is that it creates a revenue stream on non-revenue producing property. And it creates a large revenue stream that would actually pay for investment that we're going to have to make in our own city infrastructure in the years ahead. So that, that is the reason that this is compelling and different and unique.
Yeah, I got the old MOU. And yeah, I would like to know why that got removed.
What section are you referencing?
On the old one, as, project agreement A. It's page four of the old MOU. It's actually on page five, where the party shall endeavor to agree upon the terms related to the garage for usage, ownership, financing, construction, and management. And that totally disappeared.
At that time, and I should probably let Mr. Trent answer this, but I know at that time, it was a totally different concept, because it was going to be, as I recall, there were going to be, there was going to be an interior garage with residences around it. And now I think we, they may still have that. I don't know. But I would assume that is going to be something that is going to be on them. And we are not going to have an underground potentially or surface lot for City Hall.
I think it would be a combination, underground and parking garage. I think is the direction we're going, because I think what they said was that this would keep any parking facility above ground from being too tall and not being consistent with the square. We have gone back and forth about parking demands for City Hall. And to me, to some degree, it's a bit unknown, because we need to know some more costs before we, I mean, we've given them a range. It's basically what we've done is we've given them a range based on the employees here and based on whether or not, what it would look like if some of the development departments relocated. And so our guidance to them is that we have a maximum number that they need to consider for the plan. And I imagine that would be something that we could work for, work through if it created something that we didn't want.
I do believe that's something that ultimately we'll still have to agree on. The, the, the plans for the parking totally changed. But I'll let Mr. Trent.
Let me just, part of it is, was just cleanup. So if we look at section 4A, it says the parking garage to be located on Block A of the property shall be made available to the companies, may be required for parking for the hotel and residences, and shall be made available to the city as may be required for parking for City Hall or other public parking needs as necessary. And the project agreement shall set forth the terms relating to the garage for usage, ownership, construction, and management. So that's all to be determined between now and next spring, when you will address the agreements at the time that you have a plan in front of you and a budget. You know how to finance it, if you decide to finance a new City Hall at that time. And you can make the decision then when we have all the facts. So it, it's in there. It's just worded slightly different.
I do fully anticipate that the city would be paying for at least part of the parking garage, but we don't know what that looks like yet.
Don't know yet. Thank you.
I still have issue with the hotel, because I think that was not met, because.
Sorry, was not what?
That was, we didn't meet the condition of the, of the previous MOU, because the previous MOU said, we, I suppose, let me think it. Provide at least a written preliminary indication of interest by a major hotel chain acceptable to all parties. So again, all I got was a letter from Boyle telling us that they had interest. But how can I agree if I don't know? That means, how can I, I think it's acceptable if I don't know? And that changed again from 100 room to 80 room, so the number's going to change.
It's, that, that's still in there. It's still in there.
No, I say we got, that's done. They say we agreed that we receive. And I'm just saying, you, I disagree, because I don't know what chain or what type. Or now they say that's going to apply to a standard.
Now we've included the Smith Travel Resources chain scales North America and the Caribbean, the upscale chain. We discussed that last meeting.
I tell you, I think they didn't met on the old MOU what they were supposed to meet. But that's my personal point of view. Now the stuff I talked about last time, and I don't see again in there, because we, every time I ask for numbers, they tell me, oh, we're going to make so much money on taxes, on revenues, on stuff. And last time I talked about it, I asked that something would put in there who eliminate all kind of handout to Boyle, so we can actually make the revenues I'm getting promised from my constituents. That means no TIF, no pilot, no concessions. But it's not in there, so.
What you asked for last time was not related to the MOU. It was related to the resolution that has already been approved tonight. Where you disagreed with the numbers.
No, no, I mentioned that I would like on the MOU.
And we did take that out. We took that out of that resolution.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. But I mentioned that I would like on the MOU, there was somewhere who said that we would not give, or the IDB, because we don't, we not give any TIF, any pilot, or any concession, so we can actually get the full revenues we are saying we will get, because that's how it is sold to the constituents. They say, we're going to make all this amount of money. But if they get a pilot or a TIF, we won't get that money. So I would like that on the MOU to protect our revenues, because that's what it is to sell it to the constituents. Because as soon as we give it to the IDB, there is no guardrail. They can give pilots, they can give TIFs, and the money we're supposed to receive, we won't see it. And that's, you know, we can, we cannot say we're going to get all those revenues, and we open the door not to get revenues.
But wouldn't our final decision be based upon that? I mean, the cost, the revenue, the ROI. I mean, I feel like that's part of what ultimately compels a positive decision or a negative decision by this body. And I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know if they have somewhere in their idea that they're going to ask for something. I have no clue.
But that's what, that's my point. I have no clue either, but I don't want that to happen.
But, but.
Because as, as soon as we convey to the IDB, if they decide to give a TIF or a pilot, we have no, we have no recourse. We have no say on that.
But realize, this is about them figuring out, is it feasible for them? And if they decide it's not feasible, remember, we get the information from them. And that's going to be part of what they evaluate. And then we have to evaluate, does it work for us?
But they can decide that it's feasible with a TIF or it's feasible with a pilot.
And then you can decide, no, that doesn't work for us. Ms. Bates, you may want to add to this discussion.
In this situation, the type of pilot, which is not something we would recommend for commercial retail, would have to come to this body. A TIF, which is a totally different vehicle, where you do get the money, you just funnel the money back into the project. You don't lose, you, you, you receive the tax money, the increment, and you remove the percentage that you need to repay your bond, your city debt. And then that money goes back into the project. So you get the money, you funnel it back into the project for public infrastructure.
And that could be.
And Tom Trent is much better at answering this than me, please. I would like to let you hear from him.
Yeah, the short answer is the TIF statute in Tennessee requires that the city council approve the TIF. Period. If you're including county taxes, it requires the county commission to approve the TIF. It's, if it's used for anything other than the parking garage or public infrastructure, it requires the comptroller of the treasury and the commissioner of economic and community development to approve the TIF. It's way too premature to answer that question until we know the financing and equity structure that they're proposing for the deal. And so it's, it'd be helpful to get, if you want to proceed, by letting them continue with their development plans, that part of what they're obligated to provide by next spring is their financing plan. At that time, we'll know, and you can evaluate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hear what my constituents say. I haven't, I have one person in my district who told me they were for, all others told me they were against it. So I have to do.
You talked to everybody in your district? I'm impressed.
For all the people I talk to in my district, and trust me, they know where to contact me. They even send me written letters, Mayor. And I read everything, and I respond to every email I receive and every phone call I get. So to all the people I talk to in my district, they don't see that as necessary as of now. So I can't vote yes for it.
I don't think any of this is necessary. I think it's a tremendous opportunity worth exploring. So that's why I would say it's worth exploring, which is all that we are committing to doing. So any further, anybody else have any questions, any discussion, anything you want to ask of Mr. Trent? Ask of me, ask of Ms. Bates? Okay, we're going to move forward with the vote. This is resolution R2508-47. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Four to one. And that's going to conclude the regular agenda. Moving us now to other business. I have several street closures this evening, so. Okay, well, you go first.
So this weekend, a few of us from the City of Gallatin attended the 85th Annual TML Conference. And our mayor, Paige Brown, just finished up her term as the president of TML. And I just wanted us to, or I wanted to commend her here at this meeting for her great leadership and service to TML. It was such a pleasure this year. Well, last year, she took me under her wing, introduced me to a million and one people. And then this year, all those people came back, and they knew me and remembered me. And then I met so many new people that bragged about our department heads and people that they had worked with within the City of Gallatin, and especially bragged about how knowledgeable and how hard of a worker that our mayor is. So I just want you guys to join me in commending her on a great term serve, so.
I appreciate that. Well, thank you. A lot of people don't know what TML is. That's the Tennessee Municipal League. That is the organization that represents all 345 cities across the state of Tennessee. We primarily work on legislation, work for legislation that can help cities and work against legislation that can hurt cities. And so within the organization, we do have an annual conference that celebrates cities, but also exposes cities to different opportunities and training opportunities. And I was glad that both Councilman Juwans and Councilman Carter attended, along with several department heads. It was nice to see y'all there. It was nice to see a lot of the people that have provided services to the city over the years. And, and I did get a lot of compliments, particularly on our department heads and our staff. And so I want to commend the great reviews that I heard from people about the people that work for the City of Gallatin, because we have, there are none better than the folks that we are blessed with here in the City of Gallatin. But it, but it was a good year. I look forward to, new president is Julian McTisick, who is the mayor of Bolivar. And he's going to be a great young leader for the league in the years ahead. But I will continue to be engaged, because I think it's very important, work that we do. Councilman Juwans?
No. I want to make just a comment of Councilman Carter, who led the leaderboard of interaction of the TML for a while. And he starts lacking a little and got beat by the mayor of Laverne, who went crazy.
Hey, listen, I got second place.
I tried to catch him up, and I, I could not. That was too much work.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I, I never even looked at it then, but I saw Councilman Carter, number one, Councilman Juwans, number four, and I thought, oh, dear goodness. But I'm, I'm sorry, y'all didn't get first and second.
No, I did get second place.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I got that gift card today.
Glad that you participated, so, okay, very good. Y'all ready to do street closures?
We are.
Okay, I have several street closures. I'll get to the details on it, because I'm not seeing it off the top of the thing. So the first request is for October 4, 2025, which is a Saturday, and the time is from 6:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. 6:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. And this is for the Main Street from North Locust to College, and South Water from Prince Street to Main and Public Square. And this is for the Main Street Festival. Okay, now I know who it's from. It's from Historic Downtown Gallatin. So it's Main from North Locust to College, South Water from Prince to Main, Public Square from Main to Water. The time is 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It does have all the appropriate signatures, and you know all about what that event is, and so...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Juvans, second by Councilman Carter. Questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimously approved this fifth day of August. The second application is for August 15 of 2025, and this is the corner of Jacob's Drive and Potter Lane, and this is for a neighborhood block party, and it's asking to close Jacob's Drive from Plantation Boulevard to Chloe. The request is from the Fairview Plantation HOA. It does have our appropriate signatures, and then it has residential addresses, I guess, those that are affected by this closure. And so the time for that is from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, second by you, Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved, August 15. And then the final one is for a merry little Christmas market on the square, and they're asking to close the Public Square from Main Street to Water, December 6, 2025. That's a Saturday from 6:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And the request would be for, from Historic Downtown Gallatin. Again, we have signatures and impacted businesses also having signed, if someone wants to make a note.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Juvans, second by Councilman Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's all I have under other business. Does anyone else have any other business? Okay, seeing none. No, wait, we have public recognition. Public recognition on non-agenda-related items. So this is the time of the meeting where you have an opportunity to speak to anything that's not on the agenda. Again, you would have five minutes. We ask for your name and address for the record, and public recognition is now open. Seeing no one, public recognition on non-agenda-related items is closed. Now we need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Carter, second by Vice Mayor Hayes, Sir Jones. All in favor, say aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being with us this evening. I hope you have a great rest of the week, and let's try to be kind to one another.